This is the Wednesday, July 12, 2023 afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good afternoon. Please call the roll.
Good afternoon. Gonzalez.
Here.
Maps.
Here.
Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Wheeler.
Felt like I never left. Still here. We have one item today, this afternoon. I don't have the agenda in front of me. Could you please read the item? Oh, actually, I forgot, legal counsel. How could I forget? The Rules of Order and Decorum. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You don't forget the lawyers.
Welcome to Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in the ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are presenting an organization, please identify it. And for testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one item. Item number 589, resolution.
Adopt the 2040 Portland Freight Plan to support the movement of goods and services through the city while meeting goals for a safe multimodal system that supports economic prosperity, human and environmental health, equity, and resilience over the next 20 years.
Commissioner Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, this item comes to us from the Bureau of Transportation. The 2040 Portland Freight Plan updates and expands the city's current freight master plan, which was adopted by this council in 2006. The updated plan before us today took over three years to develop. This plan was shaped by input from community members and stakeholders. The stakeholders include representatives from the freight industry, business leaders, freight and delivery drivers, warehouse workers, communities impacted by freight, environmental advocates, industrial land developers and brokers, partner bureaus and agencies, and public advisory body members. The 2040 Portland Freight Plan is a guide that will support the movement of goods and services through the city. This plan also helps the city meet our goals for a safe, multimodal freight transportation system that supports economic prosperity, human and environmental health, equity, and resilience. The plan envisions Portland as a vibrant city with a thriving economy that connects people, goods, and services within Portland, and connects Portland to regional, national, and international markets. The 2040 Portland Freight Plan also provides a roadmap to building a freight system that is greener, safer, and more equitable. And now I'd like to invite everyone who's going to testify or present today to come up. We have, I believe we have some folks online, perhaps, and many people in the room. Let me just briefly introduce Denver Igartta, a supervising planner at PBOAT. Francesca Jones, a project manager at PBOAT. Gabriela Heron Valderrama, an urban freight coordinator at PBOAT. And of course, Art Pierce, Director of Planning, Policy, and Projects at PBOAT. Welcome, Team PBOAT. We're very excited to hear the plans that we have before us today.
Great. Mayor and city council, again, my name is Art Pierce, Director of Policy, Planning, and Projects at PBOAT. Really excited to bring this plan to you today. Culmination of many years of work and many years of fundraising to then, before even doing that work, and really proud of the product that we've brought and have ready for your deliberation today. As the commissioner mentioned, this is an update to the 2006 Freight Plan, which at that time was nationally, if not internationally lauded as a really great example of how a city can really form its energy and attention towards supporting its freight and goods movement. And this plan takes it a level further and really focuses in on the urban freight and mobility component that really is crucial to the way PBOAT services the freight industry. The, one of the key elements of this, this plan also responds to the council's Climate Emergency Work Plan Directive, as well as our Transportation Decarbonization Resolution in recent months by producing actions that directly respond to the objectives of both of those council actions. This includes eight goals and 56 actions and over 55 capital projects that will bring change to the way freight and freight systems work here in Portland. So we're going to start out with a video, give you some summary background. There was a number of these videos produced for, through the plan, and so this is one of the highlights that we, I think, really helped with our public outreach and feedback. Give it a moment to queue up here.
Hi, I'm Francesca Jones, Senior Planner in the Policy and Innovation for Regional Collaboration Team at the Portland Bureau of Transportation. For some reason, our video, when we play it through Zoom, makes the volume of the music really loud and the speaking really quiet. But if you watch it at 2040freight.com, you'll hear everything instead of having to read all the captions there. I'm also the project manager for 2040 Freight, our 2040 Portland Freight Plan.
And I'm Gabriela Hiron. I'm the Run Freight Coordinator in the Complete Street Team at the Portland Bureau of Transportation. Today is my actual two-year anniversary since I joined the bureau, so very excited to be here. And the internal subject matter expert for our 2040 Freight Portland Freight Master Plan.
Gabriela and I will provide a brief intro to Portland Freight. I'll discuss our planning framework, and Gabriela will touch on the plan's tools and recommendations. Portland's growth and development has been shaped by the movement of goods. It's in our name, Portland. But when examining this history through an equity lens, it reveals a fuller picture compared to how it's been discussed in previous plans by public agencies. Before colonization, the original people of the land engaged in trade here. Among them, Multnomah and Clackamas bands of the Chinaman people. In the 19th century, European colonizers arrived and utilized the area for shipping and trade, both with native people and other settlers. But colonization inflicted significant harm on the native people, resulting in casualties from wars, foreign diseases, displacement, and relocation to reservations. Then Portland's railroad connection to the east was completed in 1883, overcoming significant obstacles tunneling through the Cascade Mountains. Development of the rail lines was on the backs of exploited skilled immigrant labor, especially Chinese labor. Workers were exposed to extreme conditions, including risking death and serious injury from dynamite, heights, and dangerous equipment. This immigration led to the establishment of Portland's Old Town Chinatown, where this photo from historic Oregonian archives was taken in the early 1900s. At this point, goods could be moved by water and by rail, and at the beginning of the 20th century, over local roads and bridges. In 1940, the Portland International Airport added to Portland's economic advantage as a center for goods trading. Construction of Portland-area freeways in the 1950s and 60s brought the next big evolution in trade, but it came at the expense of many vulnerable communities. It is well-known that I-5 in particular devastated the heart of Portland's black community in the Albina neighborhood, the center of Portland's African-American culture, businesses, schools, and religious institutions. By beginning to acknowledge this past harm and history, Portland may begin to look to a more inclusive future that considers freight's impacts on community in pursuit of a more equitable city this plan strives for through its tools and recommendations. Today, Portland is a West Coast seaport and distribution hub like Los Angeles, the San Francisco Bay Area, and Seattle Tacoma. These metro areas serve as gateways for international trade and as distribution hubs for the West Coast. Portland is a trade-based city, 13th in the nation for exports as a share of gross domestic product. We are an economy more freight-dependent than most and is deeply rooted in our place. $28 billion of goods and services are exported from Oregon annually. The urban freight system is a complex system that supports the movement of commercial items, goods, and services to, from, and through the city, a critical flow to everyday life. Although we tend to associate freight with trucks, in an urban area such as Portland, freight moves by all modes of transportation, including marine, air, rail, and heavy and medium trucks, as well as small trucks, vans, cargo bikes, and hand carts. Not all goods or services can be transported using the same mode or vehicle type.
The freight industry is a source of jobs, economic activity, and a key for meeting the needs of the city residents for commercial goods and services. Freight-related occupations employ at least 15% of Portland workforce. Those without a high school diploma are employed at almost double the rate in the freight sector than any other sector. When controlling for education, freight jobs are proportionally higher-paying for those without a high school diploma. This really highlights the importance of these jobs for upward mobility for workers with limited education. At the same time, the urban freight transportation system is vital for post-event and community recovery. Natural disaster or human-caused emergency can cause significant damage to the transportation infrastructure, hindering the ability to provide essential goods and services for communities in need, mitigate impact to local and regional businesses, and restable crucial lifelines such as water, electricity, and communication. Moreover, when it comes to seismic hazards, there is an extensive overlap between the freight districts and earthquake vulnerabilities in our city. Therefore, it is crucial to incorporate resiliency into the analysis and planning of freight systems to identify vulnerabilities within the network and prepare for future events. On the other hand, the system is also a source of negative impacts for community and environment. A disproportionate burden is faced by residents of low-income and bi-pub neighborhoods and communities that are located near and main freight corridors. These communities are particularly vulnerable to our population due to its proximity to sources of pollution, including factories, railroads, major railways, and ports with diesel truck operations. In Portland, many neighborhoods are located adjacent to heavy freight, heavy freight activity, and have shared their concerns through our engagement, through our engagement process about the conflicts arising for the interaction of those two line uses, including conflict with vulnerable transportation users, pavement damage, health impact, noise pollution, and disturbances from nighttime operations. Another community impact, oh, sorry, is related to block rail crossings. In the city of Portland, freight railway tracks go through the middle of several neighborhoods. Several Portland industrial areas and neighborhood associations have voiced their concerns related to safety, efficiency, economics, transit service, and emergency response impacts associated to these blockages. One of the ways of addressing these impacts is the support to the transition to a cleaner, more efficient commercial fleet to mitigate diesel and vehicles' mile travel, or BMT. The public sector needs to develop strategies to support and regulate green and last-mile technologies under supporting infrastructure, from electric and alternative fuel commercial vehicles, to the required charging infrastructure, to how are we going to meet the demand that it requires electric and from the alternative fuel, to regulation of automated and connected vehicles, to research and evaluation of last-mile micro-delivery solutions and devices such as drones, microhubs, and cargo bikes. Another big shift that we have seen is all the packages that are being delivered to our doorsteps from online shopping. The growth of e-commerce and changes in customer behavior have disrupted traditional operations, fragmented the demand, placed a significant pressure on the freight system, causing a variation of the commercial fleet. We have seen a rise in smaller trucks and vans, and influx of those vehicles in local streets within our commercial districts and residential neighborhoods. The changes in the last-mile operations have also increased the demand for the curb. Therefore, improving the ability of those vehicles to quickly find adequate spaces helps limit pollution, reduce congestion, and minimize safety risks with vulnerable users. This help reduce unauthorized parking operations, idling, and BMT that comes for those vehicles circulating, trying to search for adequate and available spaces. However, the ability of cities to develop ways to address the diverse and evolving needs of freight operators particularly related to the last-mile logistics is often limited by the scarce and incomplete databases. Addressing this data gap is key to expand our understanding to better inform our policy, resource allocation, and project development.
This slide is covering some of the main activities we accomplished in our planning and engagement over the last three years. The Portland Freight Committee is the city's ongoing committee with industry and agency partners. Our community advisory committee for the plan was made up of businesses and industry leaders, freight workers, environmental organizers, and communities impacted by freight. Our technical advisory committee was made up of experts from within our bureau, other partner bureaus, and partner agencies like Metro, Multnomah County, the Port of Portland, and the Oregon Department of Transportation. We engaged with stakeholders at their meetings, hosted a public survey to learn about locations of concern and priorities, conducted stakeholder interviews with industry, community, and policy leaders, and issued technical reports. We hosted focus groups with people who live in or near and/or work in freight-related occupations or warehousing jobs, who spoke Russian, Chinese, Vietnamese, and Spanish, as well as for accessibility and ADA focus. We hosted a focus group with industrial land developers and industrial land brokers to learn how we might unlock underutilized industrial land for generating jobs. We engaged with our bicycle and pedestrian advisory committees and hosted a big prioritization workshop in person in the fall. And that's how we got here. All of this work plus more rolled up into one enchilada. Cover to cover, the 2040 Portland Freight Plan is 212 pages, so we can't possibly present on every detail, but we do want to help orient everyone to what is in the plan before we dive into key aspects. Chapters one through three are important background and context. The plan's new tools and recommendations begin at chapter four. This includes the 2040 Freight Vision Statement, eight goals and implementing strategies with over 50 prioritized actions to advance the goals and vision. While impossible to provide all the in-depth project development that will be needed for the future of freight at this one time in history, 2040 Freight does identify the need for 55 freight-related projects totaling over $812.6 million, and identifies 14 of those projects as highest priority to the tune of $265.5 million, for which this plan does not allocate funding, nor does it have direct, immediate financial or budgetary impacts. But because this is a 20-year plan, we're still going to need to support ongoing project development over time to meet the needs of freight in our transportation system, of which there are many, which these 55 projects cannot fully address, which is why we also include a Priority Freight Infrastructure Needs Assessment Tool, we call the FINA, developed to support Portland's ongoing and dynamic project development over time, so we may continue to get our system's freight needs addressed. There's also a policy framework, 23 potential industrial clusters that may benefit as local improvement districts, five street classification change recommendations to better reflect current and expected street uses, and a map of industrial areas not served by fixed route transit service to help guide future work to increase equitable access to these critical job markets and reduce vehicle trips and carbon emissions. The public process we went through resulted in this collaborative vision statement. We envision Portland as a vibrant city and thriving economy that connects people, goods, and services within Portland into regional, national, and international markets. Our vision for a low-carbon future advances safe, equitable, and efficient urban freight movement for enhanced health, prosperity, and quality of life for all Portlanders. These are the eight-goal areas articulated in the plan that shape the tools and recommendations: economic vitality, efficiency, access, safety, environment, equity, system condition, and partnership and knowledge.
Now I'm going to highlight some of the key pieces of the plan that Francesca just mentioned. First, the policy-level actions. We listed 52 policy-level actions and prioritize them based on current PBOATs and other agencies' efforts and the feedback that we collected from our committees and public engagement. and other agencies' efforts and the feedback that we collected from our committees and public engagement. This comprehensive list of actions look at the whole freight system from intermodal facilities, infrastructure improvement in key freight corridors and industrial districts, last-mile operations and innovation, current management, clean technology, access improvement for industrial workers, project development, and equity issues. While these actions have been prioritized, it is important to know that this is a twenty-year timeframe. So it's a very long time for an industry like freight where technology and practices can evolve quickly, which means that priorities can shift, and we will need to be flexible with our approach to implementation. This also involves further detailed planning and consideration to ensure that each action is well-defined, clearly understood, and aligned with the overall objective of the plan. Another piece is the freight-related projects and prioritizing freight-related needs. In the 2006 Freight Plan, many projects were identified both at the local and regional level. Since then, more than half of them have been finalized. The 2040 Freight Plan updates the current list of freight-related projects, including the relevant projects that haven't funded yet since 2006, new projects listed in plans adopted by city council since that last Freight Plan was adopted, and few new projects that were identified during our process, including way-restricted bridges and bridges in need of resiliency improvement or replacement. The 2040 Freight Plan acknowledged the need and importance of interregional coordination and support for regional infrastructure improvements to proactively address climate change, improve access, mobility, equity, and support other desires outcome aligned with local, county, and other regional plans. This piece doesn't just focus on major capital projects, but it also highlights other key strategies for these improvements, including quick-build projects, local improvement district projects, and the FINA tool that we developed to support the project development and new studies. Next, the freight district and street classifications changes. The Freight Master Plan establishes a street classification system that helps guide freight-related traffic management, road design, maintenance requirements based on the nature of the freight flow on those roadway segments and the function it fulfills. This plan only includes five changes: three downgrades, two of which are due to mapping errors, and a third one, North Decatur Street, Decatur Street, which the plan is proposing to downgrade its current classification as a freight district street to a local service truck street, following the recommendation made on the North Portland Greenway Plan that was adopted by city council back in 2003. To recognize the importance of two segments for freight movement flow in and out of key origins and destinations within the freight district to help unlock industrial land and at the same time address safety improvement needed for conflicts between heavier modes and vulnerable users, we proposed the upgrade of two sections of the system, one in the Thirty-third Drive and Marine Drive. Finally, the transportation strategy for goods and service movement. Expanding on the Transportation Plan System Policy 9.7, we introduced a nuanced approach to planning for a variety of freight needs. Seven principles built on existing urban freight challenges and existing freight-related policies described in the Portland 2035 Comprehensive Plan have been identified to develop a framework to guide the city's approach to planning for movement of goods, from decarbonization of the commercial fleet to including a resiliency lens into freight planning. For example, one of the key principles focused on prioritizing the right-size mode. A freight is not a mode, but a system, as Francesca just pointed out. Many modes can be used to move those goods and services. Therefore, we developed two prioritization approaches in accordance with two different freight operation scales: the regional, heavy cargo, and supporting economics of scales and local scale, fragmented volumes in dense urban areas, meaning industrial intermodal versus commercial and residential line uses. Prioritizing the right mode ensures that that mode aligns with the available infrastructure and the line use patterns, as well as to better inform safety considerations to reduce conflict with vulnerable users of these corridors. Moreover, prioritizing the appropriate mode based on the operational requirements, such as shipment size and trip distance, enables optimization of the system, reduces operation costs, trip consolidation, BMT reduction, and mitigation of environmental impacts.
Great. So today, we have invited testimony from three folks. We have Keith Wilson, 2040 Freight Community Advisory Committee member, president of Titan Freight Systems LLC. Mr. Keith Wilson was featured in one of our five featured perspective videos, a series we accomplished in our planning process to help illustrate the range and diversity of ways goods move in our freight system and their diverse needs for a system that meets all of our goals. Lynn Felton is with the Parkrose Argay Opportunity Coalition, who collaborated us in a unique and meaningful way in the final stage of our plan's development. And Tom Duchene is a local industrial land broker who served on our community advisory committee, is also a member of the Portland Freight Committee, and participated in our engagement to help us unlock underutilized industrial land. And before they're invited up, I hope, I also want to acknowledge important contributors who are here to provide testimony, virtually or in person, including David Stein, former chair of the Portland Bicycle Advisory Committee and member of our 2040 Freight Community Advisory Committee; Pia Welch, a current member and former chair of the Portland Freight Committee; Ellen Wax of the Working Waterfront Coalition, who is a member of our Portland Freight Committee and on our plan's community advisory committee, and who supported our main project video; Thomas Karwaki of the University Park Neighborhood Association, who, with his North Peninsula neighbors, engaged us on issues of resiliency; Barbara Quinn with Friends of Baltimore Woods, who engaged with us on a street classification change she will speak to.
Is that complete presentation?
Yes.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions at this particular time?
I don't... We certainly do have invited testimony, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And how many people do we have? Just the...
Three.
Just the three. Okay. Why don't... Do you want to go ahead and orchestrate that for us and call the people up?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I don't know if you have a particular order you'd like to go in?
Francesca said to start off, so we'll go my left to the right. Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, city councillors. It's nice to see you once again. My name is Keith Wilson, and I am the president and CEO of Titan Freight Systems, also, as Francesca had noted, a community advisory committee member. It was an honor to sit on that committee, and I do want to just take this moment, Commissioner Maps, and just highlight your staff, Francesca and Gabriella in particular. They were extraordinary to work with, always ready, and engaged us, and it was a wonderful opportunity. So there was... I was one of twenty-four on the committee. We did a deep dive into all of the city, if you will. It ranged from a diverse group of users of the system to experts in the system. And over that period of time, you know, we reviewed the infrastructure of freight and how it really works with our economy and our city. But over the course of that period of time, we really did focus on the guiding principles, which were advancing equity and reducing carbon emissions. And I'll really focus on at the end the points. What I wanted to focus on is my story. So the way a community looks without a 2040 Freight Plan is how I grew up and lived on North Fisk and Willis Boulevard. It's one of the most depressed areas of the city. We had also a tremendous amount of emissions that were around that... Vulnerable communities were really isolated in that area. I had an interstate highway on the east of me, a rail freight corridor on the west of me. On Columbia Boulevard in that area, we had heavy industry, garbage dump salvage yards. On the south, we had heavy manufacturing superfund sites. And so I really had firsthand what it looks like when we don't manage our infrastructure and our freight system as a whole. The irony of that is that my family's, you know, and I'm a second-generation freight operator. My father was one of the first to begin delivering luggage from the Portland Airport. Over that fifty-year span, now I have a trucking company, transportation company. And while he was one of the first with luggage and the small items, now Titan is one of the lowest-carbon footprint carriers in the nation, so we're fossil fuel-free. So it's a really accolade to us, and how do we now deliver that across a larger market in Portland? In particular, the projects. While there were hundreds we reviewed, and it's been little down to fifty-five, I won't dwell on that, other than one particular project in my neighborhood on Thirty-third Drive. That road is now cut off. It's been blocked, and that's a flyover onto Columbia Boulevard. It's the fourth-highest priority that you're going to consider. So I'm a user both as far as the freight goes, as well as a resident. And that is a bottleneck. It's a dead end now on a major artery, and we're pushed that traffic onto Portland Highway. And if you've tried to take a left on Portland Highway, it's a significant safety issue now. So those are the items that you're going to be looking at, and I won't go too deep into that. What I really want to focus on is the emissions part of your plan. It is heavy as far as focus. And as far as our community members, when we had our meetings, we really focused on equity and emissions. You know, you think you're going to talk about freight a lot, but it is something that we were all very aware of, and it was our priority when we were talking about that. My advice to you from the committee, and I hope I speak for you, Tom, as well, is be aggressive. And some examples that I'd like to just show on policy-guiding markets are what, Commissioner Rubio, you just introduced last year with the update to the renewable fuel standard. At the time that you introduced that policy and council passed it, and my congratulations for doing that, there was one supplier of renewable diesel which you envisioned to replace petroleum diesel. Today, there are five, and each of those providers offer the product at twenty cents less per gallon than petroleum diesel. It's a premium product. While you stuck your neck... You put your neck out there. You are now an economic driver to our city where we're lowering costs and we're improving our freight network with emissions reduction because renewable diesel delivers about eighty percent reduced emissions. Extraordinary opportunity. The second part of that is really Commissioner Maps, the USDOT Smart Cities Low-Emission Zone. That's a bold move because you're saying that we must only have electric trucks in a particular area. I was looking at a forecast last week. Forty percent of all medium-duty trucks by the year 2030 are expected to be EVs. And Portland's a driver in that market, and we just passed a rebate program through the Oregon Legislature three weeks ago. So while you were bold in that move, you're being constantly reminded that emissions reduction is an economic development plan, and that's what we're here to talk about with the 2040 Freight Plan. I want to encourage each of you to continue to move forward aggressively with emissions because it doesn't just focus on white-collar jobs or blue-collar jobs. It's green-collar jobs when you think about freight lines are being based in the market. We have a huge opportunity where Titan has received two Innovator of the Year awards over the last two years. My hope and my focus is with our city and with the 2040 Freight Plan is that our city transportation system can be the most innovative in our nation as well and show the light and show the way for other cities. And so thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be on that advisory committee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Lynn Felton. I'm with the Argay Terrace Neighborhood Association and the Parkrose Argay Opportunity Coalition. I want to thank Francesca Jones and Gabrielle Iron Fadirama for their work. I want to express my gratitude that when neighbors came to them with questions, they created the space to listen and integrated our lived experience into the final report. Even though they were in the final stretch of writing the plan and could have easily said, "Too busy, no time," they didn't. They chose, by their actions, to live up to Portland values. They were contacted by Portlanders in Argay and Parkrose because we face a proposed pro-lodges freight warehouse being built in our residential neighborhood at 12350 Northeast Sandy Boulevard and a Phalen freight warehouse that is built two blocks from residence at 4600 Northeast 138th. We all know the movement of goods is fundamental to a healthy, growing economy. We all know the world of freight is changing very fast. Clients expect goods to appear faster than ever before. But we all know building a potential 24/7 freight warehouse in a residential neighborhood fifteen feet from where Portlanders live and a block from the playing fields of Parkrose High School is wrong. We all know that when the block group in the census tract adjacent to these developments is sixty percent people of color, Portland's environmental justice and equity goals are shown to be hollow. You are right, Commissioner Maps, when you stated, quote, "No one should need extreme wealth or political connections to protect the well-being of their families and communities." Environmental equity is a basic human right. Further, in Portland, the highest concentrations of diesel exhaust from heavy-duty trucks and construction equipment occur in low-income communities and communities of color. This is also noted in the 2040 Freight Plan, I believe, on page sixteen. Yep. A comparable traffic impact study says some 2,400 daily trips, majority of them diesel-emitting vehicles, will be coming into Argay Terrace with these two new developments. We do not have wealth. We do not have political connections. This is the result. Commissioner Rubio, we know you have a very heavy lift of trying to reform Portland's permitting system, but we need some of your attention. Commissioner Maps, Commissioner Rubio, the community continues to invite you to a listening session to hear our hopes for this site. We hear over and over, "Private property cannot do anything." Then we see the city of Portland buy a parking lot for $8 million. Private property. You see, what we know in Argay Terrace and Parkrose is that we have beautiful neighborhoods. We know that this land has been used for thousands of years by native peoples as they harvested the Columbia slough. We know this is the land that immigrants farmed and created the first Portland farm-to-table movement a hundred years ago. We know that immigrants from all over the world come and begin their lives and live the American dream in these neighborhoods. We know our neighborhood's potential and beauty. We just wish the politicians who represent us did too. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks very much for the opportunity to speak. I really, really appreciate that. My name is Tom Duchene. I'm an industrial, commercial, real estate broker here in Portland since 1979, basically. And what we do are try to provide opportunities for companies to grow and expand, to move when they have to move, and that's our job, is to find the right spot. Over the years, oh, I was on the original... I've been on the Portland Freight Committee trying to give my input, not that I'm a transportation expert, but on-the-ground input. So I've got four things I'd like to say. Number one, in regards to the Freight Plan. That's a very extensive, full-blown plan. It's like any plan. There are probably... There are good parts, great parts, others that need maybe some tweaking and stuff. I won't go into a lot of detail. But the other point I wanted to make is as you guys, as leaders, as decision-makers, look at what happens to not just freight, but the transportation is balance. And I believe strongly that balance is the key to a successful development, ongoing for our, not only the city of Portland, but the metropolitan area. That balance becomes important to me. And thirdly, I'd like to talk a little bit about industrial lands and what do we look at, what do we look to for the long-term future. Getting back to the Freight Plan itself, that is... Takes a little studying. I hope you all read it very thoroughly, at least if not, at least the summary, get the gist of it. And it isn't like this came about in the last few months or the last couple of years. of years. As somebody noted here earlier, 2006, I think the Portland Freight Committee was two, three years old then, so to speak. And not being a transportation expert, I would look at that and go, gosh, I don't know, you know, what J-PAC is and what, you know, where the funding sources are, but it's pretty obvious, no matter if it was 20 years ago or today, you know, there's 100 million bucks or probably a billion dollars. I think Francesca mentioned on tap, the planned cost, if we had all the money and we didn't have to worry about it, it'd be 816 million bucks, you know, slightly under a billion. That's a lot of money. And where do you prioritize? I think the freight plan helps you do that. Overall, I think, you know what, I've seen plans made, revised, oh, let's, we'll get to it next year. Pretty soon, five years goes on, and we have to do something. I think that's the biggest complaint I have, is we study it to death. It's not just city of Portland, but hey, do the best you can and pass it, and let's go. If it isn't right, we can always make another plan. But I think that's the part I see that is, is the most important part of this plan is to, you know, if you have disagreements, go back and we may have to change something, but that's, flexibility has always been there. But decide, vote on it, do, go to the next point. I wanted to talk a little about balance because I think this is so important when it comes to land use planning, when it comes to how do we get around, whether you're walking, whether you're driving a semi-truck, trying to park downtown. Those are all, those are challenges, and we all understand that. But I think sometimes we put the blinders on when we're talking, oh, we're the city of Portland, we're P-Bot, we're going to do this or that. Not bad. What I'm saying is that it's so easy for us to get focused on one thing. I go out and I talk with the client, and they say, I don't care what county I'm going through, I just want to get to A to B, I want to be able to park, I want to be able to take my trucks, all the things that we think, well, of course. But to get bogged down in the rules, it, it doesn't give us a good light for people coming into the area, the growth aspect. And I think that that balance between city, we're not just the city of Portland, we know, I mean, we're the driving force, of course, we, the city of Portland, the businesses here and so on. But this metropolitan area is, includes two states. Oh, boy, great. We want to make things simple. It's not one state, it's two states, four counties, including Clark and the other three. People in my industry anyways, they're looking at what's the most efficient? Is there land available to build? Can we get this warehouse or business park or whatever? Can, how long does it take for us to make that development? So the balance of not just the geographic areas, what are they, like 25, 26 jurisdictions? If you go to, you know, in some parts of the city. And so I think that that's a very important point that you folks should be, and I'm sure you are, but it needs to be emphasized and reminded again that, hey, this is not just Portland. Is this, you know, is the Columbia River crossing, that affects up north of the West Coast. Everybody knows that. But when it comes to getting, things get out of balance. And one of the balance, balancing act I've seen over the last, about the time I, we moved here, was the urban growth boundary concept. Build up, not out. And as an industrial broker, for the first 10, 15 years, no problem. We had land two bucks a foot for, you want five acres? No, I want 20. Oh, okay, great, go out here, Hillsboro, go, you know, there's plenty of room. As we've grown, that building up, building out is, oh, okay, yep, that's a good idea. We're big into planning. But what happens? You've got to adjust for those transportation, whether you're walking, whether you're delivering. And we're not delivering close-in southeast industrially, our area in 1983, when I first started getting my first properties to lease. We now have mid, basically high-rise, mixed-use. It's great, it's good. Now we have to accommodate that, and I think that the freight plan, I think it does it. I mean, there's, you say, is there anything wrong with it? Yeah, if you want to really get into specifics, but we're far ahead there. Finally, on industrial lands, we are short, and I don't think this is any news to anyone, particularly of us in the development, availability, et cetera. We're short relative to our size of developable lands. Try to find a 10-acre piece near a freeway in the city that could be developed within two years or less. Good luck, it's hard. You know, and they say, well, let's, let's keep firms here in Portland, close in, so to speak, let's provide the transportation, because we don't want distribution centers moving up way north, and we want it where they can use our labor force. And to do that, you think, oh, okay, what, what areas are there? And what are the hurdles to open up that 10-acre piece up near I-5? And, you know, we know that it could be, but there's too many restrictions. We've got to be careful of that. So that, getting back with balance, the industrial lands, I would encourage you very much so if you, if you agree with this. It's been in the works since 2006. Francesca, Gabby mentioned that, you know, this plan started in 2020. Well, it's COVID. That's tough, but that's three years. And we ought to be able to plan and, and adopt it and go, and I would strongly encourage you, encourage that. Finally, our long-term view, when we moved here, and we still are, we think this is the greatest place in the world. We didn't know it until we moved here because we didn't grow up here, but it can still be that way. You guys have, or we all have a lot of problems to solve, no question about it. But in so doing, I would encourage you, take a really good, hard look at what, how this can help us move, move that freight and do it economically. We've got to compete in the market. You know, we're market-driven, you know, we're down on the ground. It's, policy is part of it. But anything you can do to encourage that, I think will make Portland, continue to make Portland be the greatest place in the world, but we have to work at it. So with that, I will be quiet if there are any questions. But, but again, thanks so much for taking the time to listen and consider these points.
Thank you, all three of you. Colleagues, any questions for the panel? Commissioner Maps?
No questions, but I do believe we have other people signed up to testify.
All right, very good.
Can I just ask a point of clarification?
Commissioner Ryan?
I'm just curious, are we all three on the same committee?
Tom and I were.
Yeah, we are.
She's a community member, yeah.
Great.
It was refreshing, you used the word balance, it was quite balanced in your point of view, so it was, we usually don't have it if I did testify like that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Dylan, how many folks do we have signed up?
We have six people.
All right, three minutes each, name for the record, please.
First up, we have David Stein online.
Welcome, David.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is David Stein. As Francesca noted earlier, I am former Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, currently a member. I was also on the 2040 Freight Community Advisory Committee. I'm also on P-Bot's Bureau and Budget Advisory Committee. That's a mouthful. I'd first like to start by thanking Francesca and Gabriela and the entire P-Bot team for all of their tireless work on, on this plan. It is a good plan, and you should approve it. There are some things I wanted to point out. First, the Strategy for Goods and Services Movement for Last Mile Operations that Francesca referred to earlier, and the overlap with the Transportation Strategy for People Movement. And on top of both of those are people walking and people biking. And something big to call out is that our freight network currently is really centered around trucks, and they are generally dangerous to people walking and biking. And this plan acknowledges that, and it calls for a lot of separated infrastructure, and that infrastructure is not free. And we also have plans that, that talk about expanding pedestrian and bike infrastructure. And so I encourage you to, to work on implementing the pedestrian, no, PED-PDX and the Bicycle Master Plan. These are both well-established, they're important, and especially with the Bike Master Plan, we're failing miserably. We need to reduce single-occupant vehicle usage. This is critical. One of the big complaints that we got during those CAC meetings was that freight is stuck in traffic. Well, traffic is largely single-occupant vehicles, and if we can get more people taking transit, biking, walking, working from home, or otherwise reducing vehicle miles traveled, that's going to benefit everyone and especially freight. We also have a lot of plans. I mean, we have a climate emergency, we have a climate action plan, we have Vision Zero where we're supposed to achieve zero deaths and serious injuries by 2025. That is a year and a half away, actually not even. And we're on pace for 60 this year, and no one's batting an eye. We need to prioritize this, and prioritizing means more than just platitudes, it means money. And something that has historically not happened is an actual funding of P-Bot from anything resembling discretionary funds. This means the general fund, it means utility license fee. Over the last 37 years, that fee, which was supposed to deliver 28% to P-Bot, has delivered 0% 17 times, or I'm sorry, 22 times. That is part of why we're in the hole that we're in. And so I encourage you to provide the funding to P-Bot so they can implement this and other plans that we say are important. And finally, for Mayor Wheeler, I was here 364 days ago, and you took the meeting challenge. The invitation is still open if you would like to attend a Bicycle Advisory Committee meeting. We meet the second Tuesday of every month at 6:00 PM. Thank you so much, Council, for your consideration, and thank you for hopefully approving this plan.
David, I would be happy to attend one of your meetings. Could you do me a favor, please, and call my office, and they'll schedule a slot that works? Be happy to do that. Thank you.
Will do, thank you.
Yeah.
Next up, we have Pia Welch.
Hello.
Hello.
Good to see you again. Good to see you too. Thanks for being here.
Sure thing.
Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners, my name is Pia Welch. Thank you for providing time to speak about the proposed 2040 Freight Plan, and thanks to everyone for the time spent on the plan. Having been around for the first freight, freight plan and as a member of the Portland Freight Committee, have lent themselves to providing comments on this draft plan. First is freight advocacy. Where's the advocacy for a critical element in our economy? Where's the affirmation and consideration for an industry that provides the most family-wage positions? Why is this not a priority? Is there a slanted perspective that is blocking a robust plan? Where are the benefits of the freight industry explained, detailed, and promoted? Inclusiveness. Let us be inclusive. Freight is not just about deliveries to a person's home, although that's what everyone wants to think about. There is business-to-business deliveries, international volume, significant movement by barge and ship. Manufacturing depends on the airport for both international and domestic movement of their products to the market. This area needs to maintain its competitiveness. As the city has a major airport, time and effort needs to be spent to understand the rest of the state's needs for accessing Portland and the movement of their products. I have a major count that I'm familiar with that's in Southern Oregon, and they have a lot of concerns about the transportation in this area. The majority of air cargo moves out of Portland to travel to its final destination. What is the economic impact and emissions impact of not keeping the volume local? Is this a trend that is desired? Reliability in getting to the airport is a concern, especially out of Washington County. Projects have been discussed, however, there has not been any movement forward in this area. Environmental concerns, there is a prevailing thought that freight is bad, 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 bad for the environment. However, there's little notation of improvements that have been made in current fuels and the lessening of emissions. There's no existing infrastructure for electric truck charging stations. A program does not exist to assist companies to obtain better equipment. There's a lot of smaller and middle type of companies that need assistance. Income too is a socioeconomic factor and is a contributor to public health, does not just revolve around transportation. Future, the future of freight, where are the plans for maintaining and improving capacity and reliability with drive times? Where's the support for products that will improve freight capacity? What is the status of brownfield cleanups? Where's the support to not continue to add cost to the movement of freight? Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thanks, Pia.
Sure. Next up, we have Bradley Boatright online.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Bradley, and I come as resident of the Park Rose Neighborhood. I also sit as the Land Use and Transportation Chair, the Park Rose Neighborhood Association. I wanted to highlight a few things in the 2040 Freight Plan pertaining to the Park Rose and Argay neighborhoods. Two questions the freight plan asks and to be remembered. Will it address structural racism? Will it reduce carbon emissions? Some background information from the plan. Portland has some of the highest rates of diesel emission exposure in Oregon. In fact, Portland-area residents are exposed to diesel emissions at a rate five to 10 times higher than the Oregon Health-based particulate exposure standard. On-road diesel vehicles, such as heavy-duty trucks, account for about 15% of total diesel emissions in the Portland area. What of some of these neighborhoods? On map three, incremental daily truck volume, Park Rose scores nine to 10. Map four, non-ramp locations with significant truck delay, Park Rose scores nine to 10. Map five, existing daily truck volumes, Park Rose score nine to 10. Also from the report, the Park Rose and Argay Terrace neighborhoods are faced with risks from diesel emission due to their proximity to Interstate 84 and Interstate 205, both massive regional corridors for freight and passenger movement. They're also adjacent to an industrial area north of Sandy Boulevard. Based on DEQ diesel pollution data, the residential areas of these neighborhoods experienced diesel pollution that is four to six times that of Oregon's health benchmark for diesel particulates. This is a major equity issue for the city because the school district in the Park Rose Neighborhood has approximately 3,000 students, of which 70% are non-white, in a community where large shares of its residents fall under the poverty line. Freight emissions are especially harmful to children as exposure to diesel pollution can cause permanent damage to lungs that are still developing and can lead to reduced lung capacity that persists through adulthood. So I'm having a harder time seeing how a new diesel freight warehouse in between two neighborhoods and across the street from middle and high schools, already facing significant pollution and truck traffic, fits not only with the 2040 Freight Plan and the two questions from the beginning, will it address structural racism? Will it reduce carbon emissions? But also how that fits with the 122nd Avenue Improvement Plan to reduce traffic and to improve pedestrian access. The community has been continually told that there's nothing members of the council can do about the development, but that's because they've written themselves out before even beginning. The very least the members here could do is to visit the proposed development site or hold a listening session with the community to hear our concerns, and I invite them to do so. Finally, to quote Commissioner Maps, "When we get Park Rose right, we get Portland right." Well, we certainly are not getting Park Rose right, so we must certainly not be getting Portland right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Thomas Karwaki.
Hello, my name's Tom Karwaki, Chair of the University Park Neighborhood Association, and I want to thank Francesca. I've worked for 14 years in the city on neighborhood and community engagement issues, and I have never found a project manager as good as Francesca in terms of engaging the community and responding quickly, even if it's a late-moment issue. So we have hundreds of people in North Portland who have been very engaged trying to get either Lombard over the railroad cut or another way on Columbia Boulevard at North Portland Way to be fixed so that we can actually get in and out of the city, away from our neighborhoods, and again, from the critical energy infrastructure area hub where all kinds of dangerous substances will be coming if there is an earthquake, and it can be a West Hills earthquake, not just a Cascadia event. And that actually, superfund folks have been telling me is actually more of a problem. So that's one of the big issues, and so we want to thank her very much for that. We ask you to look at page 34, which is an Exhibit A with map eight. That shows you what I'm talking about, where the bridge is over the railroad cut, Festenden, which is where the new aquatic center is going to be, also high diesel area in your maps, and also big high-safety issue for pedestrians and the freight issues. And then North Columbia Boulevard, that intersection, that little bullet point, is where it actually will be the, one of the ones that has to be done. All of those are really critical, and we're asking you, as city council members, to give verbal, at least emphasis to the P-Bot staff to actually engage their partners to make sure that these are high priority, the highest priority items, so that we can actually make sure that people can get in and out in case there's an emergency here in North Portland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Barbara Quinn.
Hello, council members. Thank you so much for allowing me to give input today. My name is Barbara Quinn. I'm with the Friends of Baltimore Woods. I am the current Chair, and I'm also with the Cathedral Park Neighborhood Association on the board there. on the board there. I would like to encourage you to accept the 2040 freight plan. We have been working with both Francesca and Gabriella since pretty much the beginning of this project and advocating for North Decatur to be reclassified from a freight district street to a local truck street, local service truck street. And the reason we've been doing that is in order to be able to get funding for Decatur as the MP Greenway Trail alignment and also as a 40-mile loop alignment. So my hope is that you can take into consideration that both the cities, BES, Bureau of Environmental Services, and Parks, has spent a great deal of funds acquiring the Baltimore Woods Corridor, and we would really like to see it used as an amenity on the trail on Decatur. And the reason it hasn't been able to get funded for the trail is because it would have to be built out as a full truck street in its current classification. So we're hoping that this reclassification can help us get a one street in the St. John's area where people can go with their kids, on their bikes, or walking, and they do not have to worry about freight. Maybe they might have to be mindful that we are going to allow local pickups and deliveries, but there's really only one site on that section of street that is going to have that going on, and it's not very often. So that is basically all I need to say. We support this, and we've been involved in the process in this, both NP Greenway, our partner organization, we're both nonprofit community organizations advocating for both the trail and the Baltimore Woods Corridor. We've been working on this together. We did the survey, we did, I think some of us went to the open house. We have been involved in the process, and Francesca and Gabriella have both been very good at helping us be involved in the process. So I would encourage you to say yes.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Maps.
At least on what? Did we lose our timer? I'm not seeing it.
No, it's right here.
Thanks.
Kealan, is that it?
It does complete testimony.
Very good. Colleagues, questions? I have a couple. First of all, thanks, everybody who testified. That was great testimony and certainly shed a lot of light on the different perspectives. So I understand this is a plan, and we all know that plans can change depending upon circumstances changing. There is probably no area more likely to change rapidly and fundamentally than this area. And just anecdotally, I keep reading lots and lots of articles that make two important comments about freight. Number one, that it is the single largest employment sector for non-college-educated men in the United States. That's sort of fact number one I keep hearing reported. Fact number two is the industry that is most likely to be automated completely in the near term is this industry. And that raises a lot of questions in my mind socially, as well as economically, and also in terms of infrastructure planning. And I'm just curious to know, I'm sure you've heard exactly the same things and read the same things that I've read, how does that shape your view of this plan?
Well, I think you're completely right, and there's so many unknown questions. As my presentation mentioned, we have a huge data gap. It's not only on how the commercial vehicles are behaving, but also how the future is going to look like in the industry that is rapidly changing and that is going to be more automation as we move forward. We put in the plan, we wanted to highlight not just the movement of goods, but this is also a really important industry that relies on that workforce. So first, for immediate, short-term timeframe, is providing better access for those workforce that is a low-income, that might leave farther away, and we don't want those jobs to go away our city boundaries. And then second, as Keith was mentioning, is how do we make that transition? Have we moved forward to more green or automated technology, and how do we prepare that workforce to move ahead and we train them? So we listed in the plan highlighting that automization in the workforce and our responsibility to work with the industry and how do we prepare those workers, but also we integrated actions related on how we're going to support employers into that transition to the employees that need to prepare for a new kind of job.
Do you agree that technology is a significant existential threat to this sector?
I mean, there are still many unknown questions. I think that would be a really hard question to answer even when the timeframe is really going to change. But we have seen some change in warehousing. I have entered Amazon Warehouses. When you see that robot and you're just putting the packages on the shelf, but you have the robots moving through the aisles, bringing you the package, so that definitely reduces the amount of workers that are there. And we're talking about autonomous vehicles, that's also going to reduce the need for truck drivers. So how do we better allocate the workforce that we need in other jobs? That's definitely something that we need to start looking at.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Colleagues, other questions you might have?
Mr. Mayor, it's not a question, it's more a claim. I mean, it comes from me more than it does from P-Bot, but I do want to take this moment to point out the important role that freight plays in our economy. Mr. Mayor, you in particular, but everyone else on council, especially in recent weeks and months, have been struggling with what the city can do to essentially fight inflation. We see people moving out of Portland for lots of reasons. I think one of the reasons why they're moving out are high costs, which raises this interesting question. What can local governments do to fight inflation? And it's, this is an interesting and a little bit obscure question. For the most part, we think of our federal governments as being kind of the key players there in terms of fighting inflation. But since we have, since we were actually engaged in the budget debates, one of the things I've been trying to research and learn more about is what can local governments do to make living in the city more affordable? And frankly, there are not a lot of levers that we have available to us, but one of the levers that we actually do have at the local level is to promote the movement of goods in our city, and that kind of makes sense. I think that's one of the reasons why this is important. If we have a robust freight movement system, actually, it gets goods to people. In places where you don't have a robust system to get goods to people, prices tend to go up. That's one of the reasons why I think this report is so important at this time. I also want to thank everyone who worked hard on this. I know this project has been going on quite literally for years, and we are, our current operating plan goes back to 2006. I was just sitting here trying to remember where I was and what I was doing in 2006, and I can, literally cannot remember. I'll have to go back and look at my calendar and try to remember when my kids were born, but I think it's even before that. So this, I believe this update is long overdue. I think it actually very much speaks to the moment. I also want to thank and congratulate Keith for the innovative work that he's been doing to bring clean, green freight to the city of Portland. I also am very excited about some of the work that Commissioner Rubio has done around bringing cleaner freight fuels into our system. I do think that this space is very much influx, but it's also influx in a way which I think is going to very much benefit the health of our community, the economic vibrancy of our community, the livability of our community. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is interesting, great presentation. I'm going to try to put this into one question. So we sit up here and we talk about our deferred maintenance a lot, so hold on to that thought. And then we all know when we're on a topic like this, the current infrastructure we have is not the infrastructure we need going forward. So what was the dialogue like about how you unpack the old infrastructure to build a new infrastructure? And then this gets to the point of another plan without any budget, so I'm trying to marry those two thoughts.
Maybe I could speak, Commissioner, to the fact that this plan identifies a whole bunch of projects that are needed. But when we do projects, when we do plans, and they come up with, you know, this deep analysis to understand what should be a priority, we still need to do the work of updating our transportation system plan, which is a 20-year vision for the future. And when we update the transportation system plan, we will be, again, looking at how much, what our financial forecasts are, so what we can afford and could expect to afford over the next 20 years. We take all the priorities that come from the various planning efforts that we do, and we relook at criteria we have to filter them out when we compare against all of our transportation systems priorities in order to figure out the most important places for us to invest first for our system-wide needs. So this is an input to a deeper process that will come forthcoming as we're beginning our initial planning stages for a future transportation system plan update.
Maybe I'd jump in to add. Many of the projects that are listed are actually involving the reconstruction of aging assets. A lot of them are where it's outmoded, you know, even 100-years-old bridge, for instance. And one of the, I think the keys is prioritization. So the process that they went through with this narrowed the lens down to one of the most critical moves and really did a strong prioritization that already resulted in one federal grant because we knew which we thought was the most competitive project. So I think we're going to see more of that. With the amount of federal funding that is possible right now, having really deep consensus from community and from the freight industry on what are the key moves allows us to be more competitive with our project selections. And so I'm, while it's a daunting scale of need, this type of work allows us to be most targeted and frankly, more successful than we would be otherwise.
And if I may add, I think it also helped us shape the new way that we're seeing freight needs from back of 2006, really understanding new trends, and also what the federal government and other agencies that might provide us funding are looking at this issue at. So the increase of e-commerce, resilience, sustainability, all those needs, we are including to expand and to have a better lens of how we're looking at these needs compared to the previous plan.
Commissioner Ryan, if I can jump in here, I think the question and the responses are really important. You know, one of the things that plans do, as I think staff did a great job of pointing out, is to, plans help us to set priorities. And I'll tell you a little bit about my personal journey with the freight plan. I remember when it was out there in draft, I was looking through it, and we know, one of our, I think, top priorities in terms of freight bridges out there was the Burgard Bridge, and, which is an important freight bridge, I believe, in North Portland. You know, we believe that this is the most important thing that we can do in terms of fixing our bridge portfolio to help freight, and one of the things that I'm incredibly proud of is frankly, frankly, I believe that we have been actually able to secure some federal dollars for that. And that's one of the reasons why we're able to secure federal dollars for that, is we went through this years-long process to identify our top priorities. Once we identify our top priorities, we go after resources to actually make those priorities real. The Burgard Bridge is a great example, and one of the things that I expect us to do over the next several years is to kind of work down through our priority list from the most important to some of the things that we wish we could have. Thank you. And I think you also had more questions, so I'll turn it back to you, Commissioner Ryan.
I'm trying to stop myself because we're in a boiling ocean-type conversation, and we have time constraints. I think the last thing I'll end with is the crosswalk of public transportation, TRIMET, and as long, and maybe just a statement, as long as ridership continues to go down, in my opinion, because of safety concerns, it's going to be really hard to make gains because that's why people aren't taking light rail and buses instead of getting other cars. So you have to focus on that so we can then focus on what people want, which is goods and services moving around the marketplace, because everyone wants their goods and services to arrive on time. And, but it's going to be hard if we continue to congest all of our transportation systems with single occupancy cars, which people increasingly take because they don't feel safe on transit. That was just a statement. And thank you for the way, I can tell you're engaging a lot of different stakeholders. It's really obvious. I appreciate it.
Any further questions? Very good. This is a resolution. Please call the roll.
Gonzalez, Maps.
I just want to thank everyone who testified today, and I also want to recognize the dozens and dozens of folks who have participated in this planning process over many years. I, earlier today, I talked about why I think this plan is so important. I think it will actually help livability, it'll help our economy, and it'll help our overall transportation system by basically setting priorities is how you actually kind of move systems forward. I'm very proud of the work that's been done on this plan. In addition to all the staff who've been involved, all the volunteers who have been involved, I also want to recognize the many consultants who helped contribute to this work. I look forward to implementing this plan so that we can go about reducing carbon emissions in our system. We can bring back, bring around more good jobs. We can actually promote livability in our neighborhoods, and we can make our roads and our community safer, which is why I am glad to vote aye on the question of whether or not we should accept this report. I do.
Romeo.
I want to thank Commissioner Maps and the team at P-Bot for bringing this item forward. Our city relies on efficient freight mobility, and I appreciate that this plan supports a safe and efficient multimodal system while also making sure that we put a lens on equity and climate impacts and the resilience in all facets of transportation planning. We need to make sure that we are planning for our future in a way that shows that our investments reflect our vision of what a low-carbon future actually looks like, while also encouraging industry to be a full partner with us in this vision. And as Commissioner in charge of BPS, I'm really supportive of the expanded definition of freight to include vehicles that are relatively easy to electrify or, and/or have a small carbon footprint, especially for that last mile of the delivery trip. And I also want to highlight the emphasis of right sizing vehicles and modes to decrease carbon emissions as well and to use our streets more efficiently. With the significant increase in e-commerce that is here to stay, the staff at BPS is looking forward to working with P-Bot to mitigate the negative environmental impacts to our vulnerable communities that we talked about, and also manage these delivery drop-off vehicles at the curb and support the transition to zero-emission delivery vehicles as well. And just a note, speaking to some of the things that were raised in testimony regarding Prologis, my office, together with the Chief Sustainability Officer Vivian Satterfield in BPS, as well as staffs from Commissioner Maps' office, Commissioner Sushila Jayapal's office at the county, we've all been diligently working together with Park Rose School Leadership as representatives of community and Prologis to work on facilitating a good neighbor agreement that has some solid pieces in there. So we will be announcing more as that takes shape, but it's just important that, important that the public knows that this is happening. That said, I also want to be clear that, about how our future plans can involve community at critical junctures, and that's something that is really in alignment with your plan as well, so that can help inform future work as well. But overall, I'm just really, again, I applaud the team for all your great work, and I look forward to continuing collaboration between our bureaus to advance the items and appreciate the way in which you engage community. And I want to echo Commissioner Ryan's comments about it felt very robust, so thank you for that. We need more kinds of these opportunities, so happy to vote aye.
Ryan.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for your leadership, and it starts with you, Commissioner Maps, and P-Bot, Art, Francesca, and Gabrielle. Really good report. You can tell you work, your- Really good report. You can tell you work, you're working with a lot of different stakeholders. It's not just a one point of view that came to the dais. Anyway, like any good report, when you spend some time with it, you tend to have more questions than answers. And that's why it's important that you bring these to the dais. I know we have a lot of really tough decisions to make. And eventually that, that's what we have to do is we have to prioritize. And we do have to eventually figure out how we align with the resources from all different aspects of government. And I was grateful to hear Commissioner Rubio, who talked about all the different stakeholders that are in other local governments that we have to work with. So anyway, I'm not in this space as much as some on the dais, but I'm really grateful and appreciate it. And I, I just keep thinking about what it's like as we adapt to new infrastructure. And I know my, my question wasn't a gotcha, as I'm talking to myself about the complexity of this and how we have to continue to struggle, a good struggle, with how we rethink what that infrastructure looks like. And I think sometimes I have a tendency to look at replacing what is there, that we're not replacing exactly what is there because we're evolving to a new place. And sometimes it's hard for me to catch that when I'm in one of these reports. Anyway, good stuff. I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate this presentation. There's, you know, the hundreds, actually thousands of hours you've put into this definitely shows. Commissioner Maps, thank you for bringing this forward. And thanks to our terrific P-Bot staff. Commissioner Ryan, I, I loved your comment earlier that a good report causes reflection and raises more questions than it answers. That's certainly the case here with me. It's, it's a great report because you've, you've really considered all angles of this. And the more I think about it, the more I realize freight is really at the intersection of everything that is happening right now. And unfortunately, none of us has a crystal ball. But I think about the technology changes that are taking place. I think about the workforce development challenges this industry is experiencing and what that means from a technological development perspective. And of course, as you've mentioned, this certainly has an impact on our, our climate goals and definitely gets at some of the questions, the social questions around equity and employment and who has economic opportunity and by definition, who does not have economic opportunity. This sector fascinates me for a bunch of reasons. There are non-crazy people who realize that our nation has slowly moved backwards when it comes to investments in critical, large-scale transportation infrastructure. And there's a lot of smart people out there betting that we're not going to be able to solve the problem. And so there's non-crazy people actually looking at moving freight robotically through the air. And that sounds like crazy right at the moment, but it's not. If you actually look at where they are with the development of these technologies, you realize, gosh, you know, at least at a small scale in the near term, this could be a thing. I'm really intrigued by what Pia Welsh said during her testimony. And I appreciated her reminding us that even though we're talking about the Portland transportation, freight, transportation, freight mobility plan, we're, you know, we're a cog in a much, much larger wheel. And we've been talking about some of the same bottlenecks for as long as I've been in public office, which is longer than I thought it would be and probably longer than some people wanted it to be. But, you know, in our backyard, within a stone's throw of here, we have the Rose Quarter. And we've been talking about it and talking about it and talking about it. And I'm kind of like Dan. It's, you know, transportation has never been my priority focus as a commissioner. I've never been the transportation commissioner. But it, it, except briefly. It, but it's, it's what we talk about regularly. And yet, we're, we're not really moving forward with any alacrity to address what is a major issue. And Pia's point that it doesn't just matter what's happening here. We're connected to what's, you know, I've certainly been down to Medford and spoken to the people in Medford about the importance of us having good regional transportation infrastructure here so that if they're moving goods farther north, they can actually do it in an economically competitive way. But I've even heard that as far as far eastern Oregon from farmers trying to move goods. And, and so that, that is interesting to me. And then last but not least, we're doing this in the middle of a social shift. And I think several of my colleagues here mentioned that people are buying a lot of stuff online now. And the expectation of delivery has accelerated rapidly in the last few years. And, you know, I, I made a comment that probably landed poorly with, with my friends out in Park Grove. And I certainly didn't mean it to be a snub. But the reason we're replacing bricks and mortar stores with transportation distribution centers is because our purchasing habits have shifted during the pandemic. And so I would be remiss if I didn't just say, hey, where you can buy local, support your local stores. Go out there and let your local retailer know you, you care that they're still located in our community and you want them to be successful and thrive. And maybe that can also help us to some degree. Last but not least, we didn't mention port facilities. And that also shifted during the pandemic. And I'm really grateful that we have a strong port commission and we have a strong port leader in Curtis Robinhold. But, you know, when I was a kid, the port of Portland was fundamentally different than what it is today from an economic competitiveness perspective. And I would even argue that the port of LA, Long Beach, that area, they're now seeing competitive pressures from all across the planet. And yet, we fit into that again as a, as a cog in a much bigger, bigger wheel. We have to think about that too. So there's a long way of saying, it's a great plan. Planning is everything. Plans are nothing. The great quote, I think, holds here. I predict that we're going to pivot multiple times over the course of the next twenty years. I don't even think we can imagine what the transportation or freight mobility world looks like twenty years from now, today, because I couldn't have guessed four years ago that it would be what it is today. So anyway, excellent work, Commissioner. Excellent work, P-Bot. Thanks to everybody who volunteered on the committee. Really good testimony today across the board. I'm super happy to vote aye. The resolution is adopted and the report is approved. Thank you very much for your hard work. And guess what? We're adjourned.